All right, I have a thumbs up, it means it's 5:30. So we will call this meeting to order. This is our recess meeting of Tuesday, February the 20th. We will stand for the Pledge of Allegiance followed by invocation from Alderman Sistrunk, and then a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alderman Sistrunk, if you would, please.
Thank you. Heavenly Father, we pray that your compassionate wisdom and justice-making be our guide for the decisions we make tonight. We ask that you use us to help bring peace, prosperity, and hope to our city. Amen.
All right. Thank you, everyone. We appreciate everyone being here this evening. It's a special day. We have filled our Ward 1 seat. Alderman Moreland is now with us, and we're delighted to have you, so congratulations. Look forward to working with you as we go through our agenda this evening. So we will have, first item on the agenda for action would be approval of the official agenda, including consented items, if there are any changes to the agenda. Alderman Moreland, would you like to make any changes to the agenda or the consent agenda? All right. Alderman Rupp.
No ma'am.
Alderman Brooks.
No ma'am.
Alderman Bailey.
No ma'am, thank you.
Alderman Sistrunk.
No ma'am, thank you.
Vice Mayor.
No ma'am, thank you.
Alderman Vaughn.
No ma'am, ma'am, thank you.
All right, thank you. With that in mind, could I get a motion to approve the official agenda with the consented items?
So moved.
Motion from Alderman Rupp, do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Alderman Brooks. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries. With that, I will read the consented agenda items. First is consideration of the minutes of the February 2nd, 2024 work session of the mayor and board of Aldermen of the City of Starkville. Second is consideration of the minutes of the February 6th, 2024 regular meeting of the mayor and board of Aldermen of the City of Starkville. Under mayor's business, we have consideration of the resolution in support of Project Squeeze. Item B is consideration of the match for the grant improving the North Star Industrial Park. Under board business, we have consideration of fiscal year '24 CDBG public facilities improvements in an area not currently being served, which includes the area of Henderson Road and Sand Road. Under finance administration, we have acceptance of the January 2024 financial statements. Under fire department, we have permission to purchase the remaining equipment in order to fulfill the requirements for the assistance to firefighters grant with the lowest of the two quotes being $38,287 from Central Alabama Solutions. Two is request permission to allow JMCM Consulting to write and develop FEMA grants for the SFD and to pay 5% of the funded amount for project administration if the grant is awarded and accepted. Under HR, we have request authorization to extend the temporary fire inspector deputy chief position in the Starkville Fire Department through the fiscal year. Under parks, we have consideration of a lower quote for the July 4th fireworks show in the amount of $14,000 from Pyro Shows. Item two is request approval to declare speed air compressor and metal pool behind rack as surplus property and sell to the highest bidder on Gov. deals, discard or sell directly to a scrap dealer. Item three is consideration of approving amendment number two to the McKee Park Phase One Professional Services Agreement with Kimley Horn for the additional design of the standalone restrooms and the renovation of the existing concession stand for an additional fee of $10,000. Under police, we have request approval for Corporal Josh Horton to attend the Reed Technique of Investigative Interview and Advanced Interrogation Course held in Russellville, Alabama in March at a total advanced cost not to exceed $1,130 for course and lodging. Under utilities, we have accept the emergency authorization consistent with Presidential Determination Number 2022-19 from Mississippi Tennessee Transformers, Inc. to purchase Transformers in the amount of $39,400. And that concludes our consented agenda items.
Thank you, Mayor.
It is my pleasure. All right, under announcements and comments, we have, and I love doing this, we have introductions this evening, which accounts for a lot of folks. ...work at 76 Gas and Grill. Mr. Dillon enjoys fishing, hunting, and riding his four-wheeler in his spare time. He is enjoying his job with the city and looks forward to many years. Thank you and welcome aboard. We appreciate having you. Thanks. Ronald Starling is commercial driver. Mr. Starling lives in West Point, Mississippi. His previous employer was East Mississippi Lumber, where he was a truck driver. Ronald has five beautiful children. In his spare time, he loves to spend time with his family and watching sports. What's your favorite sport?
Anything.
Any of them, okay. It's baseball season then. All right, welcome aboard. And Michael Bush. Mr. Bush. Michael is from West Point as well. We're stealing all West Point folks. All right. He previously worked for Carpenter Company in Tupelo. Michael has one son. In his spare time, he enjoys riding four-wheelers and spending time with his son. And he is enjoying his employment with the city. We are glad to have you. Welcome aboard. And that was, if I didn't say it, residential driver. So we got a commercial driver, a residential driver. All right, and now the fire department chief. All right, love seeing this. First, we have Mr. Eddie Hurd, Jr. All right, Mr. Hurd. He is born in West Point, Mississippi. He left Mississippi at an early age and moved to Brooklyn, New York. Now, many years later, he's returned to Mississippi. Eddie's proud to be a firefighter and looking forward to a long and rewarding career with the City of Starkville. So do you like bagels? No? Up in New York, I thought maybe you might have done. Welcome aboard. We're delighted to have you. Stephen Miller. Mr. Miller recently moved here in July with his wife Sarah and four children, Jacob, Benjamin, James, and Aaron. He's a 10-year paramedic from Memphis, Tennessee. Glad to be in Starkville and be part of the community. He loves spending time with his family and is a rugby fan. Nice. He's always lived a life of service to others and is grateful for this opportunity to work for the community of Starkville as a firefighter, paramedic, and we're glad to have you. Welcome aboard. And Darian Rivera. Mr. Rivera is originally from the San Francisco Bay Area, California. He previously had a career in computer engineering before becoming a firefighter. In his free time, he enjoys fishing, hiking, and reading. He's pleased to be a firefighter with the Starkville Fire Department and looking forward to making a difference in the lives he encounters, and we sure you will. So thank you so much. And last but not least, we have Kessler Thompson. Mr. Thompson was born and raised right here in Starkville. Thank you. And he's also a graduate of Starkville High School. Go Yellow Jackets! He has one-year-old daughter, London Marie Thompson. His hobbies are hunting, fishing, and riding horses. Kessler is enrolled at EMCC Mayhew Campus Online, majoring in criminal justice. His parents are Leonardo and Janita Thompson, and he has two brothers, Orion and Jordan. Welcome aboard. Happy to have you. Thank you, everyone. We always love meeting new folks who are coming to be with the City of Starkville because you are so important to our operation and to our community. So thank you. I have one thing I'm gonna do an announcement of, and hopefully people saw it on the news, but I'm gonna say it again just because I think it's wonderful. The Babe Ruth Series has chosen Starkville and our new cornerstone park to have their tournament this summer. So it's July the 17th to the 21st. It's a four-day tournament, and this is in large part, besides wanting our kids in Starkville to have a wonderful recreation facility, this is in large part why we built the type of facility we built. And so they are talking about doing an international T-ball tournament and doing some other international events with folks from Costa Rica and Mexico, so I think there's some really exciting things for us. Also talking about softball, so we are looking at hopefully filling that park up every weekend that we possibly can, and I just think that's really exciting. So I'm looking forward to seeing how it goes, but for our first year to have that as a premier event is just really special. So anyway. All right, anyone else? Alderman? No? Nothing? First out of the box? All right.
I have several.
I am so glad. Thank you. Alderman Rupp.
Thank you, ma'am. First, I want to welcome Alderman Moreland. I have admired your business acting from afar. I think you're gonna be a great addition.
Thank you very much.
And if you don't know, you can see a great piece on WCBI's website. They did a very good interview with you. And along those lines, I want to recognize Cody. The Commercial Dispatch did a wonderful article on him, and he is apparently quite the drummer, but it's always great to see our employees getting recognized in a larger sense. So Cody, it was a wonderful article, and congratulations on that. Third, I want to announce Lemonade Day is June the 8th. And Mr. Thompson, the East Center's just completed a six-part animated video series on financial literacy based around building a lemonade stand, and we did them for all the Boys and Girls Clubs in the state. Your help to help me push them out, but I want to get you that link, and hopefully it'll be a fun way for to teach some financial literacy.
June, give it a little more. Is it like early morning to mid-afternoon?
No, Lemonade Day is all day.
Well, okay, like, okay. From daylight to dusk, is that what you're saying?
Well, we're considering Lemonade Night.
Oh, okay.
But that's gonna be, I think, a little more dangerous. We've got some police things to work out there just for safety reasons. But Lemonade Day, the kids set the hours.
Oh, do they?
When they're gonna be open. And we want them to do all of that.
Okay, all right, cool. So details yet to come?
Yes, we just picked that date for the Golden Triangle this week, and now we've got to get to work on all the details.
Okay, cool. All right, thank you. Alderman Brooks.
I'm the mayor.
Alderman Bailey.
I'm the mayor.
Alderman Sistrunk.
I'd like to join in welcoming Alderman Moreland and looking forward to getting to know her better and to working with her.
Vice Mayor.
Mayor, I must take this moment of special privilege to join in with the comments from our distinguished, our distinguished budget chair to welcome our new Alderwoman who represents the Great Water Ward 1, and she made it mayor a very impressive showing with the election results. So we want to commend her for her election results, and we welcome her as part of our governing body. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. Alderman Vaughn.
No ma'am, ma'am, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. All right, next we have an opportunity for citizens' comments. This is an opportunity for anyone wishing to speak to us, to provide thoughts, concerns, compliments if you like, and you have three minutes, which are timed by our city clerk. Mr. Turner.
Greetings to the mayor and board, ladies and gentlemen, to the mayor, to the police chief, to the fire chief, to the sanitation director. The citizens on the city lane, they're still hoping that they can get cameras. There are a lot of elderly that deal on that stretch of lane, and the young people make them frightened because they feel that they probably have money. But if they can get cameras, that they'll feel much safer. Javelin Street, where the funeral home is, now we need to look at making the sidewalk a little bit better. It's hard to get people that's in wheelchairs now to the funeral home and to other stretch of businesses on Javelin Street. Don't know, can people see that it's nine feet clearance of the bridge? Don't know whether they just run into it, try to sue the city, but we, I don't know what we do to make them understand that if it's over nine feet, it's not going on. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Anyone else?
Hello, members of the board, Madam Mayor, Jules Gallo, Ward 2. As you all know, I am an election commissioner for the City of Starkville, and I was a part of the group that oversaw the election of Alderwoman Moreland, so congratulations on your election. I just wanted to take a moment to thank the poll workers who were out there that day, the resolution board who came out that night to look over the absentee ballots, and a special shout-out to our city clerk, who I think did an excellent job throughout the whole process, from getting us organized about a month ago to making sure everything went well. About 20 minutes ago, our esteemed mayor asked me, this is, if I've never seen one of these things before, these elections before, how would I know she did a good job? And my answer to that now is, you are right, I've never been a part of this before. I'm 18 years old, I've voted exactly one time in my life, I've never voted in a city election, but when I was with Madam Clerk the entire night, she, there was, at no point did she not know what to do, at no point was she not in control, and at no point did she ever say that something was wrong. And I think that that's just an extremely commendable quality in a person, so thank you very much, Madam Clerk, Mayor, members of the board. Thank you.
Thank you. And let me be clear, we were just dialoguing. I was not trying to, I was not trying to suggest that you did not do an excellent job. I was just having a conversation with Mr. Gallo, so please don't take anything from that. Anyone else? Anyone else? Three minutes, citizens' comments. Seeing none, we will close it as citizens' comments. We have a public appearance this evening from Mr. Thompson, who is the director of Boys and Girls Club, and he's going to provide his annual report. Mr. Thompson.
You guys are the mayor, board of Aldermen, and the vice mayor as well. This is kind of like what I do every single year. In 2022, when I first started this position, I stand here and I say I wanted to come to you every single year because the city does help us provide funding for our programs that we run right now. So I'd like to just come every single year just to tell y'all what do we do, what has happened over the past couple months, and also just so y'all could be in like what does the Boys and Girls Club really does. Last month, where in December, I'd like to share some exciting news that we were one of the two Boys and Girls Club Mississippi's to open up a STEM center. The STEM center was donated by Cal Ripken's senior foundation, a baseball foundation up in Maryland. So basically, he came down where his people came down and gave us that STEM center. Basically, the kids are using it right now. It's an excellent program. Mayor Sprouse was in attendance and was a small people in the city. But there's some things that we got going on with the Boys and Girls Club, trying to make it a place for all kids and make it where we can build up their success for the future, just like when Alderman Rupp had just talked about financial literacy. We want all of our kids to be successful in those three areas as well. But basically, this PowerPoint just is a couple of things that we do at the club and also owe to you as well. He doesn't think so, right? That video was just a video, basically, you go on Facebook, you will see it, basically about a Boys and Girls Club, how every single day, we have about 5,000 to over the nation right now, every single day we have kids coming in. Oh, there we go. Perfect.
That video came from our headquarters in Atlanta, Georgia, and I always take a moment to share it with everybody that I talk to because it really tells the story about what the Boys and Girls Club does for every youth in America right now, not just in America, but also in our dear city in Starkville as well. We, right now, we have about 180 youth that we serve about 150 days on a basis. But basically, every single day, they're not just coming inside of the club to just go to the gym, they're coming in, they're going through evidence-based programming that focuses on our three core areas as well. But that goes back to our mission statement. Last time I came last night, I had a couple of members behind me, and they stated our mission for us. This is just what we believe in. We believe that we're trying to help all young people, especially those who deal with the most, to reach their full potential as productive, caring, and responsible citizens. Then we also have our corporate lead that you will look over there. Basically, we want to create a place where kids, a safe place where kids can learn and grow at all times through our programs. This is kind of a picture about how we see ourselves. The Boys and Girls Club across the nation and here in Starkville, we love to be that piece between school and home. Many of y'all may know that after school, that's one of the crucial times for our youth to be out of school, or during the summertime because they have nowhere to go. So we create programs, we have programs, curriculums, basically for our kids to go through at the club, and they're not just be out on the street, but they're here in a safe space and also having fun in Starkville. Many people don't know this, but we also go up to the age of 18. Some youth programs stop at 13, but like we continue on the 18, and we also do junior staffers as well. Where junior staffers, they can start working at the age of 16. In fact, I have about three right now, and I'm about to hire two more, so they can start building on their core job that they're in as well. And if junior staffers, they're here helping out us in the classroom, they're doing work at the front desk, learning things, how to read in the real world, how to grow in the real world. This is here our corporate staff for the Golden Trainee. Mr. Runthorn is our present CEO, Ms. Ashton Davis is our executive administrative assistant, and also Dr. Gatewood is our IT director. We put the calls just to let you know how much it really costs to run our corporate office in Golden Trainee, which is really located at the Columbus Club, but it's about $200,000. basically, everybody can be a volunteer there over the age of 16. Basically, they have to go through a volunteer background check or a fingerprint card as well. So if y'all want to come out, take time to volunteer, be a mentor for a kid, please come out in like dedicated time. The kids would love to see you come. They were asked about you, where so and so, where's this person? He sounded to do it. So we asked you to come out, be a volunteer. We have parents club and also we have at least one-time project where if you say, Mr. Chris, you can get in contact with Mr. Jackson, who's our volunteer coordinator. Hey, I want to do a one-time service project for the club, and basically that's, that would be perfect for us as well. This is our revenue and expenses. So basically, if y'all never saw the side of Boys and Girls Club, where this is how we get our revenue and our expenses. Majority of our expenses, like every organization, goes to our payroll. So basically, that's why if you look on Facebook, you look on our website, throughout this year, we're going to see more fundraising going on so that we can make sure that we are, we are enhancing the programs that we have at the club. We do one-off grants and the club fundraising and sponsorship and also our bidding rental. Okay, this is one of the things that I love to see is our formula for impact. Boys and Girls Club of America created this around a couple of years ago, basically saying that we believe that if we take the young people who need us the most, plus these upcoming youth club generalist theories, we can equal these street primary priority outcomes. Basically, we want every kid who leaves the club to have active success. It's proven that majority of our kids graduate on time if they're club kids. It's proven that they, that they have good characters and leadership and also they have hip lifestyle. Mr. Kestrel Thompson, he was a club kid, but he's a firefighter now, so I'm proud of him for that as well. And this is basically where you see those programs here. We have about over 100 programs. I won't take too long talking about this slide, but basically, if you come by the club, I will definitely tell you about how each one of these programs helps out our kids. Academic success, characters, and citizenship and hip lifestyle. They're going to do this every single day, trying to build those corporate, trying to build a core mindset for them to be productive citizens one day. And this is just more information about those prior outcomes and our upcoming club experience. We strive to make every club, I strive to start with a club, a safe and positive place for kids, have supportive team members, teachers to be with them at all times, a fun place because kids don't want to go nowhere, kids or teams don't want to go nowhere where it's not fun. So we're creating programs in a way, or we run our programs in a way that it seems fun, recognizing our young members when they get things, awards, and also create opportunities and expectations for them as well. And you may ask, Mr. Thompson, how can I help? The biggest thing that we say right now is schedule a club tour. Come see our kids. They would love to see your faces in there. There are some more things on this 15 list. We are right now looking for a new clubhouse because we have outgrown the club we're in. I believe they've been in that club since about 2007, 2008, but right now with the building capacity, we are looking somewhere else. Hopefully, we'll be launching a campaign soon or something in the future so that we can, we can get that face. But basically, this is just some things you can help out, sponsor a new club brand, adopt a classroom tour model, just anything that you come across, just please call us and let us know. And this is what we say, thank you to all of our supporters. We are a big advocate for Starkville Police Department, Starkville Fire Department, Starkville Utilities. They always call us and say, hey, what do y'all need to do? So I'm very thankful for Mr. Evercans, Chief Yalbra, and also Chief Val as well for helping out with our kids. And lastly, if you have any questions, please feel free to call. Thank y'all for y'all's support for our Boys and Girls Club.
Thank you very much. Let's see if anyone has any questions while we have you. Anyone have any questions to Mr. Thompson? No? Okay. All right. Thank you so much and congratulations. Your club is obviously a success.
Yes, thank you.
Oh, thank you. All right. Next, we have the second public hearing on adopting a security camera ordinance for retail professional centers of a certain size. This was, we had one at the last board meeting and we took input from Mr. Sherman, who is currently with us again, and made a few changes to the one that we're proposing, and then also did some internal research in proposing a few more changes. So and I had a bit of a discussion about that at the work session, talking about going to, instead of 5,000 square feet, going to 10,000 square feet and 50 parking spaces. So that was part of that, part of that discussion. And Vice Mayor Perkins was kind enough to call out my error on something. I had said biannual and it's biennial. So it was my, my error and thank you for pointing that out to me because you knew exactly what I, what I meant. So I always get those confused, biannual, semi-annual, biennial. So anyway, every two years. So with that, I will open it as a public hearing unless there are comments from the board at this time. Okay. I'll open it as a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak either for or against, now is your opportunity.
My name is Evan Turner Ward seven. People brag on Starve that Starve is safe, better than other places. These cameras, we hear, police cannot be everywhere. And if something happens, can't get mad with the police, but if they had cameras, it would be a big help.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Anyone else?
I'm Mo Richardson. I live in Ward three. It depends on about this ordinance, if you reduce the size, how much it will affect me, affect my family. But the real thing I got to ask you is where's the crime? You know, I've had buildings for 20 years, they don't have any crimes. One of these buildings that would be affected would be Ferguson Plumbing. I don't believe there's a lot of hanging out in Ferguson Plumbing where crime is occurring. The other thing is, if we want the cameras and we want to cover all the city, then let's, let's put them all over the city and let all the citizens of Starkville pay for the security instead of picking and choosing where we're going to put cameras because where we want to put businesses. I don't think it's fair for me to pay the security for somebody at my parking lot. If they don't feel secure there, certainly they wouldn't come and shop there. But I don't have the crime, so I don't see the need for including the cameras in the parking lots to cover that. We let each one of our tenants, if they want to, have security cameras. My other problem is, if you take a 9,000 square foot building and we divided it into units and we rented out the entire square footage of that building, who do I go to and say, I need access to a place to put the camera, a place to monitor the camera, and do the routine maintenance on it? I don't know if I have a legal right to do that when I've leased out the entire square footage of a building and I don't have an office there, nor do I have a closet to put that equipment in. Thank you.
Mr. Richardson, which center, which strip center is yours?
Overall Starkville.
That's fine.
1085 Starkville.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else?
Corey Anthony. Did y'all receive the?
They did.
So I would like to discuss that. I mean, I believe that although the question posed was residential multifamily, I think the answer did state private property owners, all private property owners. I would like any feedback y'all had on that. And also, can we request an opinion letter from the agent? Can the city attorney do that on this particular subject?
I think there's an opinion letter out there for a request that went along with Madison's, but it may have been an informal opinion. I don't know. We can certainly consider that.
Any feedback on the opinion? Anybody?
I would defer to legal counsel.
Yeah, I mean, the opinion, I mean, I think the distinction is a part, place where people live. That's the distinction legally.
Okay.
From a legal perspective.
If we could request that, just an opinion letter on this particular subject, I would appreciate that.
We will look into that. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else? All right. Seeing none, I will close it as a public hearing. We will be having a third public hearing at the next one. We will take these items into consideration and see where, if necessary, there might be some adjustments.
Ma'am, let me just review this.
Over baby.
How many properties do we know at the raised, with 10,000 square foot and the 50?
Haven't had a chance to do that research yet, but we're going to do that.
So we don't want to be impacted by that?
No, I don't.
Oh.
I know that the, at 5,000, it was an extraordinary amount, which was far too, far too multiple to feel comfortable with.
How many was it?
Some of the small ones. I didn't, I didn't count them, but it was like four pages. So the chief had his folks put together some of those lists. They went, they went over, throughout the community and looked at the places. It was a rough, it was a rough process, but and absolutely not exact because he did it via Google Earth, but yes, it was quite a long list. And so that was part of the reason for that change. And I think the chief is comfortable with the, with the raised number. So.
What exemptions beyond the raised exemptions for the modified size of building and parking space? Are there any other exemptions that have been proposed and you need?
No.
Oh. I know the two seasons state had this, or that's enacted.
Yep, they've still got theirs. And Dixburg?
Dixburg. They actually did. They actually enacted it. Dixrepost said it did.
Okay. Well, the mayor who I talked to is a part of trying to vet this, said that they never did, but perhaps they did and pulled it back and just postponed.
Anyway, they pulled it back after 30 days and made a recordation, not a requirement. But in, Mayor Flag's down there, it indicated that, he said the city was looking down there at a potential hiring private contractors installing anything, video cameras and see. He said employees, asked employees in the IP department to look at the proposal purchase about 50 video cameras using the ARPA money, American Recovery Plan money. And he quoted, he said, this will all be privatized. Company would buy the cameras installed and they would maintain them. Somebody down there had a contract with the housing authority where they were kind of looking to do that. But I mean, is that something that we could, I mean, I know, and I mentioned it, I just broke the subject about the American Recovery money, because I know that that's in a broader kind of context, it was, that money, one thing it was designed to do. And I know we've got a lot of our community to water and sewer projects and stuff, but part of, part of what the American Recovery money is for was business assistance. And I assume what they do down here is this company will install the cameras, run and monitor, probably get reimbursed by the ARPA money from the city vertical guy for all the installations or for the capital costs or something. But I don't know, I'm just still kind of concerned about the requirement on existing businesses. It's one thing if you know that you've got these requirements to see, going in on the front end and build a building, a shopping center, whatever like that, you know what the parameters are, you know what the, what all our requirements are, and I always just think like this. Another thing to get in business, be in business five, 10 years, and then something comes along like this that is potentially be a financial cost to you that you hadn't anticipated. And some of this stuff, some of these, Mr. Sherman was talking about, I don't know how many cameras that you had anticipated in your center. There's going to be quite a few. And the cost, I don't know, it was 28, 25, 30,000 dollars, something like that. But that's what we're going to run into. And I, I don't know, but if we're going to require this, why couldn't we potentially use some of our ARPA money to be satisfied to reimburse business, let them put them in, pay for them, and be reimbursed for that, for that cost of purchasing the installation of this thing? That's just one thing. But just to, I mean, I know cities, we always look at unfunded mandates that the state legislature passes down, pushes down to us. And, you know, sometimes we want, what in the world is legislature doing? They require something on us, but by the way, there's no mechanism to pay for it. Good luck in how you find a way to pay for something like that. This is basically at the local level, some of that, this is, it's going to be an unfunded mandate on requirement on local businesses. There won't be any money attached to, from, coming from us to do this. And we're just going to say, well, you've got so much time to put it in. And good luck in how you, you know, finance this or how you pay for it. And it's a pretty stiff penalty for it, you know, if people don't comply. So I mean, I want to tread carefully on this. And I see the spirit of what we're trying to do and the importance of safety in our city and things like that. And also, I see the other side of business out of being another potential burden on businesses that are stretched a lot of times. And here, this is a cost town, rent's high, you know, expenses, you know, all the, Alderman Moore knows about, a lot of leases, I do some stuff, a lot of leases are these net, net leases and stuff with the tenants paying, you know, base and then tax insurance maintenance prorate and that kind of stuff. And so it's just, it's a lot on businesses. And here comes another one. And I just, I want us to be careful how we do that because I just, we want to encourage business. We do other things to encourage business, foster businesses to make in City of Starkville. And this is one that's not going to necessarily do that. But anyway, I
Okay. All right. Thank you. Well, let me, let me respond to one thing. The ARPA money, the reason not to do the ARPA money, number one, is we've already got it committed. And number two, is that would not be matched by the state. And to me, that's throwing away half of whatever it is that, that you have. So from that perspective, and, and I certainly understand, understand concerns about that business because it's going to impact me. But I've already got cameras in and I will, I will dress my cameras up to match the requirements of the, of the ordinance because I do think it is a safety issue and safety is imperative. As we see some of our surrounding communities have issues, I think this is one of those ways that we can make sure that our community is as safe as possible. And I understand there is a burden on businesses, but they also reap a great benefit from our police department who are working hard to maintain that safety factor. I just think this is an element of that. So anyone else? Paul Van Vaughn.
Anthony, no, your problem, Mr. Anthony. Where's your property?
Where's your property? Mr. Anthony, would you come?
My property, one of the questions.
Would you, would you come up so you can be heard, please? I'm sorry.
My property is the urgent care building behind CBS.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Can I ask you, Corey, do you have cameras there now?
We do not have cameras.
Nothing. No, no existing cameras at all.
The kind of one that's the same thing with Clay was talking about, we're not occupying the area.
I understand. George, did you?
Alderman Moore, let's, if you would, Mr. Sherman, would you come up? We need to be able to hear. This is part of it, being on, being on camera and being on Facebook. So.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
That's okay. Well.
I had a question for you.
Okay.
Does anybody in your shopping center have cameras at all? Any of those businesses at all?
Yes, they have some inside, but not, not outside. And maybe it's not my time to speak, but you weren't here last time. Our shopping center's been there almost 40 years. And to my knowledge, we haven't had a crime there. We're close to the police station, right across from the fire station, and we get great service. And, you know, if you look at the long-term economy, the economic outlook for this country, small businesses are unduly taxed right now. Small businesses are under threat. They're under, you don't see a lot of people opening small businesses now. In fact, you're seeing most of them closed. And this to me, while I think the safety issue is, I mean, you can't argue that. I mean, I think having cameras, if we had a big dome over our whole city, you know, with cameras, you know, it would help. But to put the burden on business people at this particular time with the economy being a little uncertain future, you know, if we, if we raise taxes to fund it and put cameras on every street, every shopping center, then, then the whole city would A, benefit and B, sharing the cost of it. So my objection is putting the burden on small business. And so that's why I would respectfully ask y'all to reconsider this.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else on board? Okay. We'll close it as a public hearing. And the next item on the agenda is under board business, it's consideration of approval of a tax abatement request by Forty Four Properties LLC. Roy Oswalt, who's the owner, he has represented this evening by Ms. Julie Brown, and I think she's going to make a small presentation, is that correct?
I mean, I think having cameras, if we had a big dome over our whole city, you know, with cameras, you know, it would help. But to put the burden on business people at this particular time, with the economy being a little uncertain future. You know, if we, if we raised taxes to fund it and put cameras on every street, every shopping center, then, then the whole city would A) benefit and B) sharing the cost of it. So my objection is putting the burden on small business. And so that's why I would respectfully ask y'all to reconsider this.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else on board? Okay, we'll close it as a public hearing. And the next item on the agenda is, under Board Business, it's consideration of approval of a tax abatement request by 44 Properties LLC. Roy Oswalt, who's the owner, he has represented this evening by Ms. Julie Brown. And I think she's going to make a small presentation, is that correct? All right, because we're, I think at the, at the work session, we discussed having a resolution that we would bring back at the next board meeting. But I wanted to make sure that we could hear what it was that Mr. Oswalt wanted to present.
Mr. Oswalt respectfully sends his apologies. He was hoping that this would be heard quickly, but this came a little too quickly. And he's on a planned family trip and en route back to Starkville now. So he texts me Sunday and asked me if I would come and, and, and address this. I know this is a new ordinance, and, you know, we're speaking a lot tonight about the cameras and things like that, and the cost of businesses and landlords and that sort of thing. That kind of factors into this. And, you know, reading the ordinance, I thought, good lord, this is probably going to open up floodgates. Everybody's going to want you to just, hey, get rid of my property taxes. But the way this is written, it's really, the city has control over this. Not everybody can apply. I don't think this would apply to a Walmart, or a Lowe's, or anything like that. And this seems to really fit this position. Y'all may know Roy Oswalt, but, you know, he's a good fellow that did good sports. He's in the Baseball Hall of Fame, that type of thing. And, and he actually kept on to his money. And he's chosen to come home and invest it here. He's used local contractors and people to work on this building. And when he first bought it, his big thing was to put another grocery store in there. And he had it leased out for that. He had it budgeted for that. He was figuring out the rent versus the taxes and the insurance. They were all in place. They had him do a bunch of work inside to the foundation to fit the grocery store. It's 35,000 square feet. Had it all tricked out, and then couldn't get the right HVAC that the store wanted. Anyway, they backed out. They quit. So he's left with that, had to then borrow more money to put the foundation back to where somebody else could use it. Anyway, he wound up borrowing more money last fall, when of course the interest rates had gone up and costs have soared. So his calculations on what would be rent and so forth. And then what's interesting, when you do fix a building up like that, your property taxes, your reward for that is, they're going to go up, because it's got a new higher assessed value. So this ordinance came out just in the nick of time, so to speak. But it is really fitting, I think, for this. He took a existing eyesore, you know, you're driving through the corridor to Mississippi State baseball game or whatever, and everybody sees this giant vacant building and rotten parking lot. It's just a big cancer growing there. So to take that building that's 30, almost 35 years old, and really had little or no maintenance to it during that time, was a big project. He took it from one building to where it'll house three stores, and he's tried to do local. Miss Kelly Furniture is the one that's really at issue right now. They'd like to come up. They have stores in Jackson, and then one in Hattiesburg. And they picked Starkville. They could have gone to Oxford, Tupelo, or Columbus, our neighbor. But they picked Starkville. But of course, they're like everybody else. They've got a budget, and they need to make it work for their employees and coming up here. So with all this increase and all, the rent's going, is a problem. It's a problem talking to him about that. It's hard to rent out a 35,000 square foot space, but apparently for Miss Kelly, it's a small space. So they're looking at that. But your ordinance does require that it be in that corridor. It also requires that when the business puts money in, they have to put at least 50% of the current appraised building value invested in there, or half a million. He is, currently, that's assessed at 3,840,000. He has invested 300, 3,500,000 in it, plus what he purchased it for. So it's far in excess of that. It also requires that they put 15% of the renovations into the facade, and you can see that happened. And also, he asked me if I drove by and saw what a nice park he had put in. But he's referring to the landscaping. So all your developers are not happy with that. But it does look, it's a huge change. So he has done more than that, and the landscaping and the parking lot wound up being $300,000 more than he had originally budgeted for. So he's done that. It will bring in employment. He's projecting 20-plus. And it's interesting, because this won't be factory workers, or waitresses, or high school, or college kids working in a little gift shop. This will actually be salespeople, cashiers, designers, that type of thing. Dollar Tree is the other store that's projected to go in there. And since we've lost the grocery store, I know a Dollar Tree's not a grocery store, but we do have a lot of residents now can walk with the parking lot and the sidewalk. So that does have some shopping there. And then the Ace Hardware, the franchise is owned by Robert Taylor from Lewisville. So these are local businesses coming into Starkville. The revenue, it's interesting, if the city right now, the taxes at this assessed value are 18,000 a year. And of course, the county's another part. He's, your ordinance does not allow an abatement for the school tax. So that will still be paid. And of course, it's not Roy Oswalt paying that, the tenants are paying this. So if, if we, you'll give up the 18,000, so to speak. It won't be money with you writing a check like with these TIPS, but you give up that. But the projected income from Miss Kelly, from what I understand, is around 4 million a year. And that results in sales tax and inventory tax, which might be around 50,000. And that's just Miss Kelly, but you also have Ace Hardware and Dollar Tree. So you might give up 18, but that's to gain the sales tax. But then you would say, well, we would get both if we didn't abate this. But that may be the situation where we don't get that rented. And if that happens, then all you get is the 18,000 and another empty building on Highway 12. So sometimes you have to give a little to get a lot. And I think Starkville's been real innovative, and also with Highway 82 coming up, in keeping this cancer from happening in our downtown and on Highway 12 and 82. If you go to Meridian, Jackson, you know, these buildings start to get decrepit. There's no incentive for me to go in there as an individual. Roy Oswalt doesn't have any partners. He went in there and put his money in this. Why would you do that if you can't make a profit? And so that's why I think, you know, the marshals and all that going in, that, that Garen building could have sat empty for 10 years. You know, all these buildings that are old and knocked down, but these are being redone. And you have to give people incentives to come. And just like you got the grant for Highway 82, downtown, they have renovation grants. We have historical building grants and tax incentives. So this is a great incentive for the city to offer, to give somebody. Why would you want to renovate a 32-year-old building? That's really a risk. So I think it's a, a great ordinance. I don't think it's going to open up any floodgates, so to speak, because you, you've got to be able to do it and do with all of your things. So I think he respectfully requests that you grant him the abatement for 10 years, which is what the ordinance allows. And then also that the abatement, right now, is around 18,000 for this year. Of course, it doesn't start until it's occupied, and we think that'll be June or July. And then the abatement would go up incrementally as the tax assessor assesses new values with all of these improvements. So with that, you know, we respectfully request that you grant the abatement. There'll be a separate application made to the county, for the counties. But all told, that would bring the rent down to where Miss Kelly would be very happy to come in here. I think signing a five-year lease with an option for maybe 10 more. And the fact that we're getting things like that here in Starkville means that we are very attractive as a place to open up a business. So. But thank you. And I'm, I'm here for any questions?
Let's see if there are any questions. Anyone, any questions from any board members? Any questions? Alvin Beatty?
Um, um, oh, boy, do you have anything?
No, sir.
I asked her already.
Okay. May I ask three or four?
Certainly, yes, yeah. If I don't know the answer, Roy may know.
Or any of these potential, do you have any signed leases yet?
They're waiting to see what the rent's going to be.
Are these all net, net leases? These are all triple net leases?
Yes, triple net leases, yes.
These are past, these are past, on tax insurance maintenance. I'm curious about the grocery store, because I, I don't know why I'm interested in stuff like that. But it's hard to just tell, if, if the grocery business was heated, why grocery would back out of air conditioning?
It wasn't necessarily that, the, it gets into legalities, but the, it was like a broker that leased it. And then they were subleasing it to, and I can't remember, the Home Foods or Home Goods or something like that, down in Jackson Hole. And then they backed out essentially, because it wasn't ready in time. Because they couldn't get that. They knew that, again, it's like with this COVID and things like that, this particular thing that this building needed, he was trying to get a replacement in New York to do it temporarily, but they wrote back and said, it's, I'm sorry, it's taking too long. If you say we can't move in for another six months, we've lost this grocery store, so we're out.
But it was, it was a grocery store?
Yes, it was going to be a grocery store in there. So he essentially spent the last year scrambling, trying to find another grocery store. But, believe me, he's tried. But one hasn't been interested. Because we have, you know, they feel that Walmart, Kroger, and then the other little Walmart, they just didn't feel.
We moved a tap on grocery stores.
They felt that they wouldn't, they want to make a profit.
Oh, is there any way, I mean, and this may be, I could, I last heard, is, 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 is any way to get a copy of, I mean, the proposed financials of what, what y'all, what he's looking to do? I mean, capital, I mean, the, the cost, the leases, the, the projected cash flow, the stuff like. I mean, if we're going to invest in basic taxes over.
I could certainly ask him, probably, he may have had to give something like that to the bank to borrow the construction loan.
And just, just something we look at, see what, I mean, I mean, I think it'd be fair if we looked and, you know.
I can ask him. I just know his profit margin is slowly dropping. And then if he has to put in cameras, again.
Right, I mean, this cash flow, I mean, that's.
Right. I don't know. I can, I can ask him.
And, and, but, the other question, is $88,000, because, I mean, I'm, I'm over, I'm not necessarily a tax, anybody on this board knows, can tell you about it. I'm not necessarily a tax, an abatement type person, tip or anything like that. But I see the merits potentially on this. But I mean, does 88, the current tax amount, 88,000?
Right, that's with everything together.
Right, that's taxed, that's, that's the city, county, and, 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 and school. But does, does the two part, and, and the, how much of it's 55,000, 6,000 is city and county? The rest of that 88,000 is school tax, right?
Yes, sir.
So I mean, it's 55,000 on this thing, going to make or break the steel. I mean, because the, the gain or the new appraised value is going to bump that thing way up. But our, our share, the average home taxes on this thing is 18, a little over 18,000 dollars.
Yes, sir.
And what we run into every year is we have a, our budget process, we, since I've been on this board, we have scrambled and scrambled and scrambled to make our budget, our, our budget work. And, and last year, we raised, we raised 2 million's tax last year, just, just to put in the general fund and make it work. And it's, it's not, 18,000 dollars is not a lot, I guess, in the scheme of things, with our overall size of our, our general fund budget is 27, 28 million dollars.
Right.
But it's still money, and we still will have to make up that money somewhere else. If we give a full tax abatement on property, I mean, versus, say, a tax abatement on the new, what the new appraised amount would be, and those don't, not paying any more tax on it than, than what's, what's being paid right now, something. I mean, would that work, or is that, is that 55,000, 6,000, is the city and county taxes, that just a deal broker that doesn't, doesn't make the deal work?
My understanding, it, well, I don't know about that amount, but the new appraised value, they'll probably come out in October. That will definitely affect rent. And, but also take into account, I know you'd be giving up that, so to speak, but at the same time, you're getting all that increased sales tax and inventory tax and employment, you have employees. And hopefully, it'll raise the, the little strip mall right next to it, that more people might eat at Nukes and say there's a trust mark, you know. It's, it's a symbiotic thing. But, you know, if, if you get to that, then why ever, why even enact the ordinance?
I don't know. Could you?
You know, it's got to be used for something.
Could, could the tax abate be contingent on signed leases? In other words, guarantees they come in?
Well, you, your ordinance actually has a clawback clause. So if it doesn't work, then you can shut the, yeah, you can shut the faucet off. Or turn it on, I guess, whichever way you want to put it. But yeah, you do have a clawback part in that ordinance, that if the project fails. Yeah, so if it fails, you could put some teeth in, in your resolution, you could put some teeth in that if it doesn't work.
All right, thank you. Alvin Brooks, I saw your hand first.
No, I, I was just, I had the actual taxes here in front of me.
With the amounts?
In front of me, all the, you know, the actual numbers.
You know, it's interesting, because the state statute actually allows you to, it says municipalities are able to abate even the school taxes. And your ordinance specifically says not that. So, you know, the city was thinking when they did this, you know, didn't want to cut out the schools from this.
We can do a seven or a 10-year only. I mean, that's, that's a, that's a.
Right, yeah, and.
But right now, the appraised value is on, on tax rolls is like 3.8 million, something like that.
Yes, sir.
And, and, of course, I don't know whether it'd be assessed at afterwards, but I mean, it would be a gain, a pretty good, significant gain in the average home tax. And I understand that's, that would be burdensome on, if you were having to negotiate leases to get somebody to come in that thing. And so.
Let me, let me move Alvin around.
Alvin, around.
In Columbus, we had a program where if you approved a property, you could give an abatement on the improvements.
Okay.
But it kept the original tax dollars in the city coffers. And I want to be cautious on how much sales tax it generates, because if you're going to Ace Hardware, does that mean you're not going to Mississippi Lumber? Does that mean you're not going to Lowe's? So is that creating new tax dollars? I think it will with the furniture. I think Miss Kelly is great, great get it, we can get it. But I think what I'm saying is I, you can favor an abatement on the improvements, but not necessarily touching the original tax dollars. It's just not.
Well, and that, and that's an option the city certainly has.
Well, we absolutely, Alvin, sit down?
And I'm going to try to keep this, as my old boss would say, I'm a product of the Mississippi Public School system. So I'm going to try to keep this as simple as I possibly can. On the consent agenda tonight, we gave a tax abatement to a manufacturer here in town for 9.5 million, a 9.5 million dollar investment that would create about 20 jobs. And now, this particular one, with the assessed value as it sits on the books, plus whatever increase is, it's going to be significantly less than 9.5. It's probably going to come in more in that 7 range on the, when, when it is improved. So we gave that abatement to a manufacturer where the benefit to the city is in the jobs that come to us. In this case, we're being asked to give an abatement to bring some, some life back to a building that sat empty since November of 2021, and that will likely sit empty for a lot longer if, if this, this particular set of leases, or, or this center portion falls, falls vacant. Because it's, it's a difficult size to fill. It's too small for a hobby lobby, but it's too big for a, a smaller business that's looking for a space. So in, in my opinion, I'm, I would be willing to, to give an abatement for all of the property taxes, which is going to be less than what we've abated for Project Squeeze tonight. I would, I would do that in trade-off for the sales taxes that we're going to receive and the inventory taxes that we're going to receive. We're still going to come out ahead, and we're going to, we're going to create another 20 jobs or so, 15 to 20 jobs or so. So I think it's a, a net win for the city, and it's in a very public, very highly visible part of our town. So this improvement lifts, lifts that corridor up and improves, improves the, and I appreciate the park and the parking lot. It's, it, it just lifts that whole area up by, by making that investment. And I think, I think that it is a reasonable use of our, of, of our abatement opportunities. I don't think, I agree with you completely. I don't think that it will open the floodgates on people asking for an abatement, because the thresholds for the abatements are, are pretty high, and the payback is not always that great. So this, this particular project, 3.8 million assessed value is only 18,000 dollars of property taxes. And so there are not going to be lots of businesses that are bigger, that are going to be doing this sort of project. And for a smaller business, the, the numbers are probably just not going to, going to work so that they can come forward for that. But, but I think in, in simplicity, we approved Project Squeeze, 9.5 million dollar capital investment, 20 jobs. We have an opportunity to approve an abatement for what will, will be 7, 7.5 million. They never go on to the assessed rolls at, at cost. It's always something less than cost. So I'm, I'm guessing 7, 7.5 million dollars. So a smaller abatement and similar number of jobs. But we also get the sales tax. We get the benefit of a kind of business that we don't currently have here in town, and one that will pull people in to shop from the areas that you mentioned before, Oxford, Tupelo, Columbus. They, they won't sell furniture just here in the city of Starkville. There will be people who come into town. And once they're here, they'll eat, they'll shop somewhere else, they'll buy some gas. It's, it's, there's a symbiotic relationship with, with other businesses here in town.
All right. Anyone, anyone else? Alvin Vaughn?
Just 10 years.
Yes, sir. Well, you can do 7 or 10.
Up to 10.
We've, we've asked for the max.
He asked for the max.
Yes, sir. All right, coming back, Alvin Morland.
When do y'all vote before the county coordinators?
Well, we've got, I've got to talk to Rob Robertson and see, and Marvell Howard and see how to approach them. They don't have an ordinance. It's more with the, there's a state statute that allows counties and cities to. It's more with the, there's a, uh, state statute that allows counties and cities to, to do this. And then the city has an ordinance specific to this that put more parameters on it, narrowed who can apply. So I wanna talk to Rob Robertson first a little bit, but it's the same application.
So I agree with Alvin Beatty, I'm just, I mean, I'm, I'm far getting them here, but I don't wanna give more than what we have to to get on here, so.
I understand, I understand, yeah.
That's my thing.
Okay, all right, anyone else? Alvin, Alvin Brooks and then Alvin Beatty.
Oh.
Alvin Brooks. Alvin Brooks and then Alvin Beatty.
I'm sorry, excuse me.
Started with a B.
I'm sorry, no. So, we're at eighteen thousand on the seat now.
Right.
And it sounds like it's about double, you know, what the assessed value is. So, and again, it doesn't always, I, I'll say it as an example, seventy-five percent, something like that, eight percent. But what, if, if it did double, that puts out thirty-six thousand, uh, in, in taxes to the city. I, I, at this point, I'm inclined to, to favor Alvin Sistrung's proposal, uh, you know. If I'm doing the math right, you know, we're talking a little over two million dollars in sales, would generate more than that tax, more than the thirty-six thousand to, to us. You know, and you're, we're talking, you know, Ms. Kelly's four million, whatever. Uh, I'm inclined going on with, with Alvin Sistrung on the entire abatement. But, you know, instead of just saying, it sounds like we'll get this, or we'll get that, it might be better as Alvin Beatty said, for us to possibly look at, okay, what's, what is Ace Hardware projected sales?
And that, I didn't have those.
What are their, what are their projected sales? And we can do math on that real quick. What's Ms. Kelly's, what's, she just gets some projected sales, and then we could, you know, I think make a pretty important decision real quick. Are, are we giving up more than we're getting, or are we getting more than we're giving up? So, you know, and, and, and go with that. And, and my gut tells me that, uh, that, you know, the sales will be significantly higher. And, and our, our sales tax will be significantly higher than what we give up. But I would like to see it, if that's possible.
Okay, I'll see if I can do that.
See those numbers, then we can make an informed decision.
You know, because this is so much different than a TIF where the city actually has to write a check eventually and reimburse. And it's a little bit easier, I think, to swallow if you just.
But you have to write a check if you don't make it up.
Well, that's true, that's true.
Someone give you a check.
Alvin Beatty.
Well, I'll really, I'll just add to, uh, what Alvin Brooks says. There, the term cannibalization in the retail business means that you put in a store of like kind, to the ones already there, and business. All the new, all the business to the new store is not new business, so it just goes down the street.
Right.
And we've had a little of that in, in, in grocery areas, probably, that going around now. Um, and so, some of the retail sales of an Ace Hardware store might, might, we've come from two or a couple of the other three or so harbor stores, harbor, fill and supply stores we have here. And so that, that wouldn't necessarily be new net sales to see the store.
And I'll see if I've got some, I don't know.
I mean, no way, no way to know. I mean, I mean, I guess we have people that we retain called Retail Strategies.
Retail Strategies.
Retail Strategies that comes in and does a presentation this year to us, and tells us how much of our retail market that we're capturing in the grocery business, how much we're leaking, how much in the dry goods or whatever, they go through all these sectors, and they tell us, based on what our retail, our grocery, our retail sales are, and the potential out in our, in our market trade area, whatever they, they define as our market trade area, how much we're losing of that. And that's where we, they, they encourage us, if you, if you can, you know, go promote a store to come in, this is where you, you're, it's gaping, where you're, where you're missing sales, something like that. Um, so I don't know about the hardware sector, groceries was not one of them, we, we, we right at. If we, if we capture any more grocery business, we're gonna start shutting stores down in, in Matheson, in Ackerman, in places like that, if we start, if we start to expand our, our grocery market. So what we, we're not losing any significant grocery business to West Point or Columbus, we're capturing our market in, in, in the grocery thing right now. So, um, I, I guess that would be some concern to me, that we just moved the business from one store to the other, and we captured sales tax, but we were getting sales tax at that other store.
I would, I would think Ace Hardware actually, it's, it's competing against Lowe's, because if you look at Bell's in East Mississippi, they really, I know they have a hardware store, but there are a lot of their businesses with developers and, you know, big, big stuff, framing and, and that type of thing. Um, so if they hurt Lowe's, it's just, you know.
All right, anyone else? Alvin Sistrung?
And, and as, as we're struggling with this and trying to figure out what we do, one, one option might be, um, since this is important, and we can only control what we can control, this is important in terms of getting some leases executed, particularly with Ms. Kelly's. Um, I, I think it would be appropriate to look at that full abatement, and maybe shorten the period of time for which we abate it, um, so that it is a, a, a shorter period of time, but a full abatement during that, during that time period. That would allow the business to come in, um, get, get everything settled, and as things move forward, they can be planning for increased rent down the way.
Okay.
I just have to do a quick comment.
Alvin Morland.
I promise it's quick. Keep in mind, there's two other people that are sharing the space with them that have executed leases, so they're not on the hook for the full, the eighteen thousand. And that's gonna be the divide between the two other two that agreed to go.
For square footage.
Yeah.
That's past the minimum net leasing.
Right.
So it's just, so that's what I was saying, two other people have already agreed with the, just in my, keep that in mind.
And I'll, I'll get with my client and, and get, see what we can do about cash flow information about the three businesses and, and his as well, and.
Cost and expenses and cash flow or whatever on that, just projected. And in the economy, we're, we're looking at, but that's, if we're, if we're looking.
Guys, let's don't have multiple conversations, okay? I'm not talking about you, Mr. Beatty. Just, came on just a second, okay?
If we, if we're looking at a tax, but that's, you know, for instance, that's a best about the city. And so, we, I think it'd be fair for us to go with the same.
Who should I direct that information to?
I think to the mayor.
To the mayor, okay.
I'll disseminate it properly.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much for your time.
All right, no other questions? Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Well, we, yeah, I'm sorry, and I, I apologize for speaking while we're speaking, we were trying to find a landing space for this.
Okay, well, and we will be bringing it back, so there are other opportunities to have this discussion and share information.
And if you need more information, something else you think about, email me, or, or you can call Roy directly, I mean, we'll be happy to respond quickly.
Thank you so much, appreciate it.
All right, thank you.
All right. Uh, one last, one last item on the docket for action, and then we'll, uh, see about going into executive session. Uh, this is the claim stocking, do I have a motion?
No approval.
I have a motion from Alvin Sistrung, do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Alvin Beatty, I believe it was.
I have a, I have a second.
No discussion, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
All right, motion carries, five to two. Um, we now have executive session briefing on pending and potential litigation matters. Do I have a motion to go into closed session to determine the need for executive?
Don't make such a motion.
A motion from Alvin Beatty, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Alvin Vaughn, is that you? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we are going into closed session to determine the need for.